I don't believe that handling a solid waste fits within that jurisdiction of the Surface Transportation Board. Let's face it, this is the federal government telling the town of Wilmington, we have to take a solid waste facility that has no state or local control or jurisdiction. They have these facilities in New Jersey and it's a nightmare. They're open dumps. And if this was to come forward, this would be a rolling back of environmental laws that have been put in place to protect people. The handling of solid waste is a threat to human health and it has to be done properly. And if you don't have the regulation and you don't have people in control on the local and the state level to control these kind of projects, it will be horrible. It is a huge threat, not just to Wilmington, but to every community that has a railroad across the nation. This is no longer just a local issue. This is a national issue of national proportion. We must be successful. We can't even think about losing this battle at all. If we were to lose this battle, I think we have to take it to as far as we can. We have to protect our community. And to think something like this at the Olin site, what a slap in the face. Thank you.
Mr. West?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First one thing I'd like to say is that if you look at the Surface Transportation Board website, when they talk about this April 19 meeting that happened today, the site was accessed 3,393 times since the end of March. This is not the town of Wilmington strictly looking at this project. I was fortunate to have listened to a lot of the debate on the Internet during the day and listened to not only Representative Sullivan from Wilmington, our own attorneys, but people from the Meadowlands down in New Jersey, members that support the MRA, the Mass Municipal Association, rather, excuse me, and solid waste transfer people. I agree also, I think I agree with Mr. Newhouse in that this is one part that we'll all agree on. New England Trans Rail should not come to Wilmington. I think one of the things that I'd want to say, which was said many times during the debate today, but I'd reiterate as a local resident, is that when you take the trash and go and sort it and process it, those are parts of a profit-making organization. It's not strictly, a real operation would be if you had a sealed container, brought it on-site, took the sealed container, put it on the train, and sent it on its way. As far as the residents go, I don't want 400-plus trucks traveling through Wilmington with God knows what type of waste and materials that aren't from Wilmington. A lot of it is not from the state of Massachusetts. So I think that whatever it takes, whatever we need to do to tell the Surface Transportation Board that this is not the proper site. And again, this is not a local issue. A lot of people from other states are looking at this. And we've gotten a lot of great assistance from a lot of different avenues. And I'd like to commend each and every one of those areas, avenues, and people that helped out in that discussion this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you, Jim. I also agree with Frank in the point that this is a no-brainer. This is obviously a subject that we're all going to agree on, everybody in the town. This is a very serious situation where we have been into this for almost four years. We have, this is an issue that we have to listen to the professionals. We have to listen to whether the legal professionals, the environmental professionals. This is a project that we do not want in our backyard, and again, as they said, in anybody's backyard, but especially on that site. I think that site has a long history we all know about, and it's just, to steal Susan's line, is it's a slap in the face to the town to have that in here, to come to our town. And I think this is definitely an issue that everybody in the town, and all of us up here, I'm sure, will agree on.
Thank you. Our second question comes from Mr. Buick, and Ms. Sullivan will answer first.
Good evening. Incumbents run on their records while challengers run on promises. Incumbents, what have you successfully accomplished over the last three years? And please be specific. And candidates, what can voters unequivocally expect you to have accomplished three years from now?
Good question. What have I accomplished? Well, I think one of my biggest accomplishments is that I have worked really hard and made sure that our government is accessible to the people of the community. Before I was on the board, one of the reasons why I ran was because I felt as though the Board of Selectmen were not open-armed about people coming to meetings and commenting on their concerns. And when we had issues with Olin and Maple Meadow and things of that nature, the library, for instance, and I felt as though people were treated poorly. I think that's changed. I think people feel more comfortable about coming to the board. People know that I'm very accessible. I field a lot of phone calls. So I feel that that's a huge accomplishment. I feel as though I've whittled away slowly at apathy. Apathy is a real issue in town. People don't come out to vote. People don't really participate. Town meeting is an example of that. I try really hard to whittle away at that. Those are also things that you can expect from me if I'm re-elected. Some more. We have great legal counsel right now. I think I didn't actually view the Surface Transportation Board hearing today, but I heard that the town was very well represented there with the town manager, with Geo Insights, and with Deutsch Williams, Mr. Durensis, and Dan Deutsch. The other thing that I've accomplished is we have accomplished hiring an environmental consultant for the town. I brought that forward before I was on the board. It came to fruition while I was on the board. Now we have a full-time environmental consultant that we can go to on these issues. I think that's another accomplishment, another thing I'd like to build on. I've also aided in the West Schoolhouse with Mr. West to get funds. I've done tours of the public, of all the buildings in town to see where we need work, where we don't need work. I think those are all accomplishments, and I see a stop sign. Thanks.
Mr. West?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As most people know, I served on the Wilmington Board of Selectmen from 2004 until 2006. Basically, before I got on the board, one of the things that I saw was I saw that the board was not accountable to the people. I saw a lot of people that were frustrated, a lot of people that didn't really seem like the government was working for them. While I was on the board, like I say, from 2004 to 2006, I worked on the West Schoolhouse and got to work with state reps and the state senator, and I know Suzanne was greatly involved in that also, to get state funds to restore that building. That building was an old dilapidated shack. It was recently rededicated to the National Register of Historic Places. I also worked with the representatives and state senator to acquire state funds for the Butters Farmhouse. And again, it wasn't just a one-man operation. A few of the things that I think that I could take credit for is the old garage down across from St. Dorothy's. I saw it as an eyesore, and I said, "We should get rid of it." And it was taken down. I also look at the tax rate in town. Recently, Skip Monahan, our town assessor, was quoted that if we did not take the steps in 2004 to do the tax shift that we did, the average tax rate would be over $1,000 higher than it is today. One other thing that I accomplished was that the little building next to the library, the little white building, now that's going to be called the bookstore next door. You know, we bought that through town funds, and that's going to be open on election day. And I encourage people, after they vote, come down to see it. What am I looking to do in the future? I see the board going back to being stagnant. I see it becoming more of an advisory board to the town manager, and I don't want to see that. I want to see the town, the Board of Selectmen, continue working on behalf of the town. I want to look for state grants, federal grants, and also the recycle center. One of the things I want to do is, I toured the Lexington Recycle Center the other day. They raised $300,000 to the town of Lexington. I'd like to see us do that as well, and many other projects, but I'm out of time. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Do you want to know what I've done on the board the last three years? Well, as you know, I wasn't on the board the last three years. Some of the things that I would like to bring to the board right now is continuity. Number one, I'd like to be able to be accessible, obviously, to all the residents in our community, as well as to be able to work with whoever gets elected on the board. There are some big issues coming up as far as field space, taxes, and I don't know if we can go into that, if there's going to be more questions on those specific things. But I believe that there has to be continuity on the board. You have to be able to go work on an issue, talk about the issue, debate the issue, vote on the issue, and then move on. You have to be able to not get frustrated, or mad, or disappointed, whatever, and then hate a person, or hate's a tough word. So I believe that is one of the big things in town. Accessibility to the residents, that's a no-brainer as well. If I'm working here at the town hall, everybody would know where I am, and obviously be easily accessible. As far as the tax rate goes, well, we all know that as a board, you really can't do a whole lot except for vote to get the shift of the heavy tax burden onto the commercial to keep it away from the residents. We've all done that. We don't want to go for a two-and-a-half override. Some towns are doing two-and-a-half overrides just to balance their budget. And Wilmington hasn't had to do that, and that would be a terrible thing if we ever did have to do that. So I think accessibility, continuity, and researching every issue. Obviously, I'm new on, if I was elected, I'd be new on the board, and I wouldn't know everything about every issue. I know that going in. But I know also that I would take the time, research the issue, do my homework, and make a decision that would benefit the town. And that's what I'm sure we're all here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
Thank you for that question. First of all, I think that the most important thing that I've done in the last three years is be a member of a team. I think that I've been an important role player with my background as an attorney. I think it's been particularly beneficial with some of the more difficult legal issues that we've faced in the last few years, including the New England Trans Rail situation, Maple Meadowland, Phil, and et cetera. I think that one of the things I've clearly done is to support professional government. I'm not shy about saying that I've supported the reappointment of Michael Kyra last time. I think that it's a credit to the town that we've been able to maintain positive cash reserves, to avoid any budget balancing, prop two-and-a-half overrides. We haven't had wholesale layoffs and things of that nature that many of our neighbors are seeing. And we've done all of this really with an unfair amount of local aid being directed towards our town. So I think that promoting and encouraging professional government is really one of the single most important things that I've stood for in the last three years. I also have been involved in the CWRNP, which is Comprehensive Water Resources Plan. That was a several-year effort dating back to probably 2002, and that finally came to fruition this past year. The results of that ultimately, I believe, will be to enable the town to secure safe drinking water. I think it'll enable the town to pass some sensible regulations with regard to wastewater regulations and groundwater regulations. And I think that, just as importantly, it's going to enable the town to address the real severe conservation restrictions that have been imposed on us by DEP. So hopefully, we'll be able to see all of those things through to fruition in the next three years.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Tucker, and Mr. West will respond first.
Hello, Mr. West. How are you?
Good evening. Very well, thank you.
Wilmington has some outstanding public safety departments. No one doubts that. But an incident back last year, late last year, caused some concern in town. On one weekend, there were three auto accidents around the same time, and then an explosion at an industrial site in Ballard Vale. Just as those incidents were coming to a close, there was a house fire. What occurred then was that the Wilmington Fire Department only had two personnel who could fight that fire for about upwards to 10 to 15 minutes. There was some concern that, from fire personnel, that because of the large number of businesses that are coming into town and population growth, that it might be time to reevaluate public safety levels. Can you discuss that issue?
Absolutely. I haven't been a lifelong resident of Wilmington. I've seen the town grow and grow and grow. And what I would like to see is that I'd like to see a fire substation in North Wilmington. That's something that the town has talked about for years, and I think it's finally time that it comes to fruition. Right now, what we're doing is that there is a comprehensive study to go on to see exactly where the site should be. I think it was pretty much decided that it should be on the Andover Road Ballard Vale section of town, basically to support the industries that you're talking about. So I have absolutely no problem with supporting a substation in North Wilmington. What I might like to do, to expand on that a little bit, just to talk about Public Works a little bit, is that the Public Works Building itself, you know, is, I think, is in shambles. I mean, I think that what we need to look at is, in that whole stretch, we need to look at a substation in North Wilmington. We also need to look at a Public Safety, excuse me, a Public Works Building, and also work with the Water Department down in that area. And I think that we had a study ongoing that I was a part of as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I think I'd like to see the results of that study, and see us press forward, and finally do what I think is the right thing, and put a substation down in North Wilmington. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you, Franklin. I agree also that we do need a substation. I would be all for a substation up there. It is obviously an issue with the growth in town, the businesses up in that part of town. It also would be a nice, faster access to the Route 93 up there, if the substation was there. That's one of those issues where, is it time? Is it financially sound? It wasn't a few years back, it was brought up. Now maybe it is. That would be one of those issues where we would research, check through the budget, find out if it was financially feasible to do it. But absolutely, we need one at that part of town. More firefighters, more police. And again, you brought up the fact that the town has grown leaps and bounds over the past 15, 20 years. It would definitely back a fire station, a substation up in North Wilmington.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
To answer the question directly, I would agree with the first part of your question, Mr. Tucker, that we have fine public safety services here in Wilmington. I think that our police department and fire departments are second to none. Beyond that, I do recognize a need and a benefit to a fire substation in North Wilmington. Way back in 1997, when I was a member of the Board of Selectmen, we hired a consultant to come out and to evaluate all of the needs of the town, top to bottom, and to prioritize those needs. And that plan is not sitting on a shelf gathering dust. It's one of those plans that we continue to turn to for some guidance and to help us establish our priorities. With respect to the Public Safety Building, I think it's only a matter of time. Will it happen in the next three years? I don't know. I think it's going to depend on a few different things. In large part, I think it will become a political question. Are the residents in town willing to pass a prop two-and-a-half override in order to subsidize the substation? In this particular case, in the past, the town has only had two-and-a-half debt exclusions. So after we've increased the taxes to pay for that capital expenditure, that increase ticks back down after the loan is paid off. Because of the nature of this improvement, it would require additional personnel, and that two-and-a-half override would stay on the books, and we would never tick that expenditure back down. So that is a big, you know, that's a sell to the public. And ultimately, I think the public will decide that it's necessary in the near future. It may be that the town feels more comfortable after the Public Safety Building and the school are paid off to tackle it. But in the meantime, we do need to find the most appropriate site and to try and secure funding outside of the government process. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. I'm not sure what report Mr. Newhouse was referring to. I believe it may be the Needs Facility Study. And if that's the case, I don't think we've followed any of the recommendations in that report, just for the record. I do, however, feel as though we need to reevaluate, to look at the levels of staffing at the Public Safety Building between the fire and the police. And I think that was pretty much the crux of the question. I do support a fire substation in North Wilmington. If we're going to be looking at this I-93 interchange, it's an absolute must. I think a two-and-a-half override, and it will be a two-and-a-half override, is going to be a tough sell to the people, the community, no matter what the project is. Two-and-a-half overrides are just not passing in a lot of communities. I think so, therefore, the town needs to look at a fire substation, even if it has to be in a phased, in a phased way, you know, one phase, you know, now, another phase, two years from now, three years from now. It's something that we really need in North Wilmington. We need to get the job done. We have to stop talking about it, put a plan on the table. And like I said, if we have to do it in phases, let's do it in phases. But it's a necessity, and we've been talking about it for years, a lot of lip service, but nothing's come forward. And it's time to bring something forward.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Ms. Mayor Hoddle, and Mr. Semaglia will respond first.
Town Council Paul Durensis' contract will come up later this year again, followed by Town Manager Michael Kyra's contract in two years. What position do you plan to take on both of these contracts?
Thank you. Right now, if the contract was today and I was on the board, I'd absolutely vote for both of them, to extend their contracts. But you're talking two years away for the town manager, and it's a long time away to be talking about spending money or a job performance. Anything can happen in two years. Right now, I think Mike Kyra's done a great job financially. As we've spoke before, we have a town that hasn't had to have the overrides. We have not had the layoffs. We have a surplus, which many towns don't. Our town council, Mr. Durensis, Deutsch Williams, have done a phenomenal job in their time as well. And I think if I was voting to extend their contract right now, today, if I was on the board, absolutely I would. But I'd also negotiate their contracts from a town's point of view. I would not want to sit there and negotiate from their side. Any negotiation for a contract for the town, we have to take our side. And we have to work hard to get the best deal, the most bang for the buck, whatever you want to call it. But we do have to do the negotiating from our side of the table. And I think that hasn't happened a lot in the past, and I think that I would support both of them right now if we're voting on today, but their contracts are still a couple years away, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
Let's start with the town council. It's my intention, if I'm re-elected to the Board of Selectmen, to reappoint the firm of Deutsch Williams to be town council. I've voted that way the last three years, and in fact, I may have even made the motion more than once. But as I have in the last three years, I will also try to negotiate a better contract for the town. I don't believe that we are in a financial arrangement with that firm right now that is in the best interests of the town. It's not always an easy topic to address. It's not always an easy task to take on. But if elected, I'm going to try and do that again this year. With regard to the town manager, I was asked that question way back in 1996, and the answer for me doesn't change. I think that Mike Kyra is doing the job. I expect to vote to reappoint him. If the reappointment vote were tomorrow, like Mr. Semaglia, I would certainly vote to reappoint. Having known and worked with the man for the last decade, I would be shocked if he made the kinds of mistakes that it would take to, you know, to cause his termination or not to reappoint him two years from now. So I fully expect I would vote to reappoint him. But again, you know, you let his performance speak for itself. I think that might be the only question. I won't use the full two minutes. I think it's been said. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. Well, let's do the town manager's contract first. It's two years down the road. As many people probably are aware, I did not vote to reappoint the town manager last February, I believe, is when we had it in front of us, January, February, I can't recall. Since that time, I think since I voted no, I think there's been a little bit of a change in how we speak with each other or handle things, and I think there's been some positive changes in that regard. So what can happen from now into two years, if I'm elected on the board, I can't really say, and I wouldn't say, and I wouldn't commit myself to anything one way or the other. As far as town council, that appointment is up on a yearly basis, and I would definitely support town council. They've done a tremendous job for us, and, you know, we do get a lot of bang for our buck. We pay $175 an hour for our council. I'm sure Baker &amp; Botts and New England Trans Rail's council, they were paying probably, you know, $1,200 an hour for their council. So I do think we get the best bang for our buck. They've done a great job for us, and I would definitely, and our council costs have gone down this year. So I would definitely support town council. Thank you.
Mr. West?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I too was on the Board of Selectmen when the appointment for Mike Kyra came up, and I was one of four that supported the reappointment of Mr. Kyra. One of the things that I've heard all the three other members speak about is the word "performance." I actually have Mr. Kyra's contract here, and one of the things that was introduced, actually, by me on the negotiation of Mr. Kyra's contract, was a performance review. And basically, what it does is that it allows the Board of Selectmen, at their discretion, to have, to give a written performance to the town manager. According to this contract here, it should be provided on or before April 1st of each year. It's past April 1st, and the Board of Selectmen has not done any type of review on the manager. The other thing that I did actually do when I was on the board and in negotiation with the manager's contract was actually draft a written review of the manager's contract. I believe that it's incumbent on the Board of Selectmen to have, actually, to have a formal review of the manager's contract. I think that each one of the selectmen should tell you, the taxpayer, how we feel about the town manager's performance, and also tell him, because we are his bosses. The Board of Selectmen are the bosses of town manager. And I think it's important that the bosses tell Mr. Kyra how he's performing. Do I have a problem with his performance to date? Absolutely not. We're in good fiscal shape, and I think overall, he's done a good job for the town. Regarding town council, I would also vote to reappoint the firm of Deutsch Williams. One thing that I would do is that as we get into legal issues with other, any legal issues, what I would do is that I would ask town council for an idea of how much it would cost. And in some cases, such as a real estate transaction, maybe we could use other council, because in his contract, which I also have, there is no provision that we can't use outside council for any of the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buick will ask our next question, and we're back to Mr. Newhouse responding first.
Several years ago, the town shut down five of its nine water-producing wells due to contamination. Since that time, the town has been running at 60% capacity and has been supplementing the shortage during periods of peak water usage by purchasing water from neighboring communities. Currently, the town is engaged in constructing a permanent connection to MWRA water. As things stand today, is MWRA membership the town's best route for providing an adequate supply of safe drinking water to the residents? And should the town explore any possibilities of rehabilitating the wells that have been compromised?
Writing down the two questions, Mr. Buick. Thank you. Let me start with the second question first. I have not given up on the prospect of rehabilitating our own drinking water supply forever, but for the foreseeable future, indeed, I have. In February of 2003, when the town determined that there was NDMA in the groundwater in that area, the town immediately shut off the wells. And it's that kind of a contaminant that, it's the fear of the unknown that I have. I'm not afraid of what I know that's in there, that I know how to treat and how to handle. It's what might be in there that science can't quite detect yet that makes me nervous. So in the near future, I do not expect to use that water supply, our own water supply. With regard to the MWRA, I absolutely believe that a permanent connection to the MWRA, to use it on a part-time basis, a permanent part-time basis, if you will, is certainly the most reliable way to provide a quantity and quality of water that the residents in Wilmington deserve. I have supported that in the last three years, and I will continue to support that. The Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan, which this town spent years and hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop, relies on the MWRA connection as a linchpin to the entire big picture, to all of our water resources and wastewater needs and groundwater regulations. If we have spent that time and money to produce that plan, which was supported unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, then we need to follow through and implement the recommendations that are contained in it. So I believe that for the foreseeable future, we will have to have a permanent part-time reliance on the MWRA.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you. Should we look at, should we abandon the wells altogether? Absolutely not. Should we look at rehabilitation? Absolutely. And we should hold those who have contaminated our drinking water accountable, because they are accountable for it. So absolutely, I wouldn't, I don't think any community should be abandoning a resource like that. Of course, at this point in time, nothing has been done, because we're still in the process of getting Olin into the Superfund program. So there's been no testing, and nothing's been done for almost, what, two years now? Here it is, in 2003, the first time I ran was when NDMA was found in the groundwater, and most likely in our drinking water. And here it is, 2007, and we're still in the same situation. And it is a little frustrating and somewhat irritating. Should we go to MWRA? I don't see any I don't see any other way at this point. I think that as far as the Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan goes, and I was also a member of that plan, and also pushed the state into having the town implement that plan, which looked at wastewater, stormwater, and your drinking water as one resource. And I, I agree with Mr. Newhouse that we do have to implement the recommendations in that plan. It costs us at least a half a million dollars to develop with many, many hours of everybody's time. So MWRA is a component of that plan for permanent part-time usage. But when people see that what it's going to cost them in their water bills, I think they're going to be shocked. And that's one thing that really hasn't been discussed. People don't know how much it's going to cost, whether Olin's going to pick up some of the cost for the connection or not, for our entrance, entrance fee. There's talk about about $10 million. And what is going to be on a monthly end for, for our families, we, we just don't know. And I think that we need to start opening up that discussion.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve, I also feel that, that an MWRA, MWRA connection is probably the only way we can go right now, because we don't have the, the way to, the means to, to give us all the water that we need. I do believe that Olin, Olin 100% accountable. I believe that the entrance fee of $7 to $10 million should be paid by Olin, and I think that we need to do whatever we can to make that a reality. As far as the CWRMP, I think that we do need to implement some of the, start implementing the recommendations. But I also feel that we need to look at our wells also. If there's ways that we can restore those wells, I'd like to see if we can. If there's ways that we can create new wells or improve upon the new, the North Wilmington well field, I'd like to see us do that also. I think that MWRA is going to be very expensive to the taxpayer in the long run. It's going to be very expensive on our water bill. One, one benefit that we have right now is that the water bills that we have compared to MWRA towns are cheap. Even, I know that we had an increase, we had a 10% increase in our water rates last year, but still, when you talk about towns that have MWRA water, it's very expensive. And the other thing also on that is that, you got to remember, is that the MWRA is looking for members because they're hurting for money. And what's happening is, is that in order for them to improve their infrastructure over time, they're going to need money. So for us to take money out of our pockets, to hand it over to them, when we have a water supply that we may be able to pick up, I'd like to use our own water supply first, but unfortunately, I think MWRA, at least on a part-time permanent connection, is the way to go. But again, I'll say, whatever the fee, $7, $10 million, Olin, come to me, and I will look you in the eye and say, you're paying it. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you. I, I agree too that I, we all would want to use our own water and our own wells, and maybe technology down the road will, will be able to, to do it. MWRA on a permanent basis, or even a full-time basis, there's, there's towns, there's communities all around here, that the businesses that were there for, for decades in the 40s, 50s, the Tanneries in the 60s, were, did a lot of damage. There, there's a lot of damage down, down in the water that, that's been happening for, for decades. So I think we're in a position now, as a town, to get hooked up to MWRA on Olin's dime and, and make them pay for it. They are accountable. And, and make them pay for it. As far as any of the other fees, the hookup, beyond the hookup fees, absolutely. And I think that'll take a big burden off the residents in Wilmington, on the water bill. And it is a endless supply of, well, I shouldn't ever say endless supply, but it's a, a supply of safe drinking water that many towns have paid dearly for to hook up. And if we have Olin on the hook now, and they could pay for it, that, that would be one of those situations where we wouldn't be looking at it override, to hook up to a, a supply of safe drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Tucker, and Ms. Sullivan will respond first.
Hi, Ms. Sullivan. Staying with the issue of water, and this question is, is being prompted by a letter to the editor that came to Wilmington Advocate this week. There's been some discussion by some candidates of lifting the ban on watering lawns and filling pools. That issue prompted Lee Brooks to send a letter to the editor. Ms. Brooks lost a son last year to cancer, a cancer possibly linked to contaminated water supply. And this is what she said in her letter. This is the hottest issue our town faces, polluted water, water itself, because we don't have anything without our most precious resource of clean water. I realize it's an unpleasant topic, and I also realize that lawn watering is important to many in this town. Yet I refuse to believe that anyone can place the issue of wa, of lawn watering, filling their pools, over the importance of lives being lost. Our cancer rate is two and a half times higher than average. I don't understand what motivates this issue to be kept so hush-hush. If Ms. Brook, if Ms. Brooks was, if Mrs. Brooks was here, how would you answer her complaint on abandoning the ban on this precious resource and filling the pools? And also talk about that, that cancer, that, the contamination water that possibly took her son?
Well, it's a, it's a tough, I, I actually know the Brooks family, and it was devastating. We did a bone marrow drive for Paul, and it was devastating when he lost his battle with cancer. I will have to say, one of the reasons why I got involved in the first place in the community was because we knew that the, something wasn't right in town, and we asked for a study, and that study is still ongoing since 1999. Is the water responsible for it? We don't know yet. Jury's still out on that. As far as lawn watering, I can understand people's frustration. I have a garden. I have to get up in the morning, I have to water and be within the water bans. But what people have to realize is, these are emergency measures. We had to take these measures because we're using somebody else's water. And you just can't take somebody else's water and, and waste it and sprinkle it on your lawns. It's, it's, it's really a crime when you lose a resource like your water. It's going to hurt us financially, aesthetically. But as, as far as, it's really hard for me to respond what I would say to Lee, because I've already responded to Lee when, when I read the letter. And I understand, and I too share her frustrations. People want to talk about watering lawns and filling pools, and we, we have to borrow water from somebody else and pay for water from some, somewhere else. And, you know, you still can water your lawn. I, I find it interesting, because when MWRA comes in and people are paying a high amount of money for their water, I wonder how much time they're going to be spending watering their lawns with MWRA water that comes about, you know, hundreds of miles away from the community of Wilmington to put water on their lawns. I mean, there have to be better ways. There are ways that you can still have a green lawn in, at the proper times for watering. The two things, I can't compare the two things, watering lawns and life. I mean, it's, you know, water is, sustains life. You know, it's a no-brainer for me what's more important.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess, you know, probably being a parent of two children myself, and I've got, I'm fortunate to have two healthy children, I don't think that a family can suffer a, a greater loss than a child. And I'd probably not want to comment much more on, on that end, because that, that should not be part of a political debate. I also lost both of my parents through cancer, so I know what it's like. My dad passed away when I was 15 years old, and I saw him go from 200 pounds to 120. So I, I have a strong understanding about cancer and, and the effect on families. But that being said, as far as the water ban goes, a lot of that is mandated through the state. You know, we're under emergency procedures as far as, you know, when we can water, and basically, the water restrictions that we have are pretty smart watering. You know, that you don't want to water during the heat of the sun, so you water early in the morning or later on in the, in the day. You know, you have the before nine o'clock and after five o'clock. There are other, there are some other avenues, such as water barrels that, you know, that can be purchased through the town hall here, that people could use to water their lawns. But I think, you know, that we don't have a choice. We need to have the water ban, because, you know, as Suzanne said, and I, I feel that both Mike and Lou will probably say the same thing, in that water is a precious resource, it's a limited resource, and how can we go around watering our lawns and saying, oh, by the way, Burlington, Woben, you know, help us out, because we're in dire straits? I mean, you know, we're fortunate that we don't have a total water ban, so this way here, people can enjoy some limited use of, of watering their lawns. And thank you very much.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I too have had cancer in my family, and it is a very tough disease to go through. But when you're talking about the, the town water and how we've lost our wells, and the, all the contaminants that were in there for, for decades and decades, it's, it's obvious that we had to close the wells, and we did. So you know there's going to be a shortage of water. This is why you have to look at ulterior, ulterior sources to reopen maybe some of these wells, and we can rely on our own wells again. But then again, that's the MWRA is, is the good out, to have that steady stream of water. And I think residents can take it upon themselves if they want to pay a little extra money to have a greener yard and use the water to, to water their yard. Thank you.
Mr. Newhouse.
I would just first also make the observation that I don't know of any family who hasn't been affected by a terrible disease like cancer. And my heart breaks for the, the author of that letter. Having said that, I, I think it's very important to understand that there are two different issues with regard to our water. One is, pertains to the quality of our water, and one of it pertains to the quantity of our water. I've just heard four candidates for the same office, to a person, indicate that they find it extremely important, among the highest priorities, to make sure that we have a safe source of drinking water. We may disagree on exactly how to get that source, but we all agree that we need safe drinking water, to a person. And that's the answer that I would expect. I would also expect to hear the answer that I did from everyone up here, that the Olin Corporation needs to pay for that. And we agree on that. I hope that when folks see, you know, political advertisements, flyers, answers to maybe one question on a debate, but not another, I hope that they don't misunderstand that there is another issue, and that's the quantity of water. And it may not be as important as the quality, but it's still an issue that affects a lot of people in Wilmington. In 2002 or 2003, the Department of Environmental Protection limited the amount of water that we could withdraw from the Ipswich River watershed even before we knew about the NDMA contamination. So at least for my part, if we start talking about, you know, watering lawns and, and filling swimming pools, I believe that that's a, that is a quality-of-life issue in Wilmington, certainly not as important as safe drinking water, but it's a separate issue that we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Ms. Mayor Hodel, and Mr. West will respond first.
Yeah, to switch gears a little bit, some of you have touched on the struggles that some of the surrounding towns are going through as they deal with override proposals, deep budget cuts, that sort of thing. What do you think is key in keeping Wilmington ahead financially?
Well, I think we've been fortunate that we've had a surplus in our budgets, and that, I'll give kudos to the town manager, where we have a very, you know, fiscally-minded town manager. And I think that's where a lot of, you know, a lot of that should go. But I think that we could always do better. I think that we need to look, not at the taxpayer to fund all of our programs, but we need to look at state, federal, and private grants. I'll give you, one idea, for example, is with the full-time, full-day kindergarten. I think I'm the only candidate here to, to at least, you know, personally endorse that program. And that's a program that is going to be funded probably 99% through state money, not through town money. What are we doing? Is that we're providing quality of education to our youngest children, and it's, and social interaction, which I think is, you know, really needed in our, you know, with our kids today. We're getting rid of buses that are in the middle of the day, and we're also providing an opportunity where kids can grow, nurture, and basically, it's a win-win situation for the town. Again, you know, like, like I stressed earlier, as far as, you know, like, like the West Schoolhouse, for example, we were able to use, to get state money for that. And, and the kids at Shawshing School did a marvelous job. The Butters Farmhouse is another example, where that's state money. We're looking, we got $70,000 in grant money to help rehabilitate it, and there's other avenues. I know in Tuxbury, for example, they were talking about field issues. They got a $75,000 grant for a lacrosse field. You know, so like I said, is I think that we need to look and explore any and all avenues. And I think basically what we need to do is, is that, you know, is in discussions with the town manager and department heads, is tell them, look, we need to know wherever we can get grant money. I want you to apply for the grant. In some cases, if it's a matching grant, you know, do we have the funds available to do that? But I think that we cannot solely rely on the taxpayer. Our taxes are getting ridiculously high. The other thing we need to do, do is look at how we spend our money. And some of the bigger, heavy hitters might be the pension plans that we have, and, you know, see what, see what types of avenues the town employees can help us with as a collaborative, collaborative effort. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you. I agree that we've had a history over the past 10 or 15 years of, of coming out of the red and getting into the black, and you do have to give the, the town manager a lot of credit for that. Smart spending is a way to obviously save money and to better utilize our tax dollars and the money that we have. I'm sorry. Grants and other options, other vehicles to use to get, to get money into town is obviously a big, a big issue. The, the, the financial, the frugal spending of the money that we do get is very, very key. That's when you have to work together as a board. You have to, again, review all the, all the options of every issue, every, whether it's a fire substation, or a, a new high school, or a, a new football field surface. You have to look at every issue and go over it, and you, spend your money wisely, is what I'm trying to say. Smart spending. Again, we've been very fortunate in, over the past few years, that we have not had to have a, an override. So taxes did not become an issue. There's some ideas from, from other towns, they have some professional volunteers that get together and just go after grants. That might be an idea that we could look after, look out somewhere down the line for Wilmington. Grants are a big key to getting money in here from, for all different departments. And our department heads in Wilmington are doing a good job of getting many grants. And I think that we have to keep going the way that we're going right now. Thank you.
Mr. Newhouse.
First of all, I would agree with some of what's been said in that the professional government that we've promoted in town has a proven track record of running an efficient operation. On top of that, though, the people in town who vote on the budget year in and year out at annual town meeting have also shown fiscal discipline and responsibility. So I guess we all, as residents, can stake claim to part of that success. Specifically, from a government standpoint and the Board of Selectmen's standpoint, when it comes to balancing your budget and being fiscally responsible, it comes down to whether or not you can cut costs, or whether or not you can realize new sources of revenue. With regard to cutting costs, I think we've been pretty effective at that. Even though the, the town, over the course of the last decade, has run, has run a pretty lean machine, the fact of the matter is there are always opportunities to cut costs. For example, during the last several collective bargaining negotiations, the town has sought to negotiate the change from Master Medical over to another insurance company. That saves tons of money. When you look at, you know, health insurance costs rising 6%, 7%, 8%, 9% in the course of a year. So even though we have efficient government, we can continue to do things to cut costs, and we should continue to do those things. The other things we've done well that we should continue to do is to do a lot of our work in-house, that many towns do, outsourcing. Our Department of Public Works, the, the Parks and Grounds guys and the Highway Department guys, they've been stretched to the max doing sidewalk projects that many towns farm out. We need to continue to do that. In terms of generating new revenue, we need to forge public-private partnerships with big business and small business alike, realize some funds to do some capital improvements that we just don't have the money to pay out of the, the annual budget. I see I'm out of time. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. I think that we, we really need to stay the course that we're on. We do run a beer bones budget in a lot of our, our departments, just like Michael said, the DPW beer bones. So I think that we need to continue on that also. But I, I think one of the, the biggest budget busters is the insurance, the cost of health insurance in, in our budget. I believe the figure is up to almost $7 million now. And it's, it's due to continually increase. I think Boards of Selectmen's everywhere, including our Board, need to start putting some pressure on our state and federal delegation, asking them for relief, asking them to do something, anything with the rising healthcare costs. So far, everybody, once again, has given a lot of lip service on both the state and the federal level, but we really haven't seen any actions. I think it's time for communities to start to send letters and asking people to come in and speak with us, tell us what they're doing. We need help. We can't continue on this course. It is a budget buster. We have several budget busters. We also have the energy budget busters that we have in our personal finances, which also spill over into our municipal budget. I think it's time for the town to start looking at our public buildings and see if we can make them more energy-efficient by window replacements, things of that nature. things of that nature, to see if we can save money on that end. I do have to agree with Michael. I think the taxpayers of the community have to be thanked, not just the administration. At town meeting every year, the taxpayers have accepted the budgets that have been put in front of them. And they've willingly, maybe with some complaints, paid their tax bills. But overall, I think that the taxpayers of the community also need to have a pat on the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Bjork, and Mr. Smaglia will respond first.
Though the town is receiving less local aid from the state under the legislature's budget than it would have under the governor's proposed budget, it will still be receiving nearly $700,000 more than had been projected in the town manager's budget proposal. Do you agree with the town manager's recommendation that that nearly $700,000 should be put into operating reserves in order to begin rebuilding the free cash account? Or would you use those funds, which some might consider extra money, in some other way? Those funds, for instance, might pay the bulk of the costs associated with the construction of a fire substation, which each one of you has indicated is a priority in town.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I do agree with maybe putting it into a reserves right now and help build up our free cash that we've taken, that we've not had to take away as much as other towns. Again, not doing a two-and-a-half override just to balance the budget. We have been very fortunate, as we've said on the last few questions, of having the luxury of not having to do an override to balance a budget and big-ticket items. Again, that would be one of those things where we'd have to investigate in every single project, big-ticket items, to say, now's the time to do it, now's not the time to do it. Having that money in the reserves would give us that luxury down the line to maybe fund some of those big-ticket items. So I think that, yeah, right now, where we stand financially, that putting that into the reserves would be a good idea.
Mr. Newhouse.
I would agree with Mrs. Smaglia that it's a good idea to just put those funds in reserve at this point for two different reasons. Number one, I think if anything else, we've gotten a sense through the legislative process and looking at the local aid numbers in recent years, that those numbers are rather unpredictable. And obviously, those numbers are affected significantly by the economy in general, but it's also affected by politics at the state level that are beyond our control. So if we have already crafted a budget which meets the needs of the town, I think continues to improve the quality of services that are provided in town, and we've done that in a balanced budget, then I think we ought to put the money in the bank. On top of that, I think that some people don't quite appreciate how much money we save merely by having such a favorable bond rating. And that bond rating took many years to get to the point that it's at. Took many years of fiscal discipline on the part of the residents. Took many years of hard work from boards of selectmen and from the town administration. Having that bond rating saves us a lot of money. And by putting that money in the bank, we will hopefully continue to enjoy the very favorable rating that we have and continue to save money on short-term borrowing for important projects, whatever they might be, whatever the town might think is important in the coming years. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. I would have to also agree. I think that we need to take that money and put it into the free cash account. Over the last, I don't know, four years, I think we had close to $11 million in so-called free cash. That's down now to about 3.4, 3.6, I believe, is what the figure is. We need to build that up again. I have to agree. That money has been used to balance the budget. I'm not in favor of having a huge $11 million free cash account, but I think that we need to put that level back up to maybe around the $5 million range. If we're going to do a project like the fire substation in North Wilmington, I believe we have to put a plan on the table, present something to the people, and ask them to fund it through an override or a loan or something of that nature. But we need to make sure that we have enough money just for our daily operations and our daily services for the people of the community. So.
Mr. West.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess we'll go unanimous on that one. I also feel that we should put the money in the reserve for a couple of reasons. Back several years ago, we did have about a $9 million surplus, and now we're about 3.5 million. It seems like each and every year, the past several years, we've had to dip into the reserve so that we didn't have to lay off public safety, teachers, any town employees. We've actually grown in the level of town employees that we've had. More importantly on that is that your reserve helps you get the bond rating. Right now, we have the second highest bond rating that we can get. What I'd like to do is to talk to the town manager and find out at what level do we need to stay at? What level do we need to reach and also pass so that we can get the highest bond rating to help us with these projects in the future? One of the other things also is that probably when the budget process starts, I'd like to, I would bring in the state reps and also our state senator and basically have them on camera and tell them right up front that we want as much local aid as we can get back from the state. At least this way here, you know, we're on track with them. Let them know right up front that we want them to work for our behalf. I know there was a little dissension on monies that we got from what we got in local aid versus what was proposed. And, you know, that's an argument that I'm not going to get into. But, you know, basically, I think if we have our state rep and state senator in early, tell them what we're looking for, you know, get their feedback on it. But the bottom line on it is 700K, I throw it into the free cash account. If for some reason there are some minor projects that, you know, maybe a small portion of it could be funded through that, you know, I'd probably at least listen to that. But right now, I'd say put it in the bank, just like we all have our personal rainy day accounts at home, and leave it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final question of this portion of the program will come from Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Newhouse will respond.
First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Stewart, for having, conducting this debate in your usual professional manner. And I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out on a Thursday when I'm missing my favorite television shows. But I can't think of any other better place to be. Wilmington is booming, especially when it comes to the business community. There is 10,000 manufacturing jobs in Wilmington, making it the third-largest manufacturing community in the state. Also, new retail is coming to Wilmington. Three new areas, including the Wilmington Plaza, which just was approved. And there's even the possibility of Starbucks coming to town. But what is coming here? It is a lot of strip malls and a lot of corporate businesses that are going into industrial areas. What leadership role will you take, or can you take, to bring a more cohesive plan of building and creating businesses to Wilmington? That includes looking at the master plan or committing to smart growth or maybe even doing some advanced zoning, such as what's happening in North Wilmington?
Well, to answer your question directly, I would continue to do some of the things that I've done, not only the past three years, but throughout the course of the last decade, primarily to use my position as a member of the Board of Selectmen to encourage and promote economic development that is not, doesn't have negative impacts on the character of the town. Now, I'm not one of those people that thinks that every change adversely affects the character of the town. I don't think that at all. I've been a vocal supporter of the rezoning effort in North Wilmington. And that's actually a great example of an issue that we touched on earlier. That is a way to generate new growth. That is a way to subsidize the ever-increasing cost of doing business without having to tax the residents of town more than the 2.5% limit. I think that the Neighborhood Activity Center in Wilmington is a perfect example, in North Wilmington, rather, is a perfect example. We've gone through all kinds of public hearings. We've had all kinds of input. We've reached out to residents and businesses alike. And I think that what's going before the town is something that's well worth doing. There's another project off the top of my head that's on Route 38. That's a business that's been there for ages. It was a manufacturing business that has a retail site in the making, in the offing. And as part of the redevelopment, that property owner is cleaning up what, for years, has been a site that everybody's been afraid to touch. That's the kind of economic development that we should be promoting. We shouldn't be looking at every business that wants to come to town as a potential enemy. There is certainly such a thing as intelligent development and intelligent zoning. And I think as members of the Board of Selectmen, it's incumbent on us to try and be opinion leaders in that regard. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. Well, one of the things I think we need to do is we need to make sure that we stick to our master plan, our affordable housing plan. I actually helped lead the charge to defeat the Neighborhood Activity Center at town meeting last year. And the reason why was because it didn't protect the neighborhoods. The plan, the new rezoning that's being proposed this year, does that much better now. There's larger setbacks to residential areas. I think one of the things that the board needs to do proactively, and I can tell you whether the board does it or it doesn't do it, it's going to happen. It's going to actually go to the people, and the people will decide what will happen. If the board doesn't decide, we need to look at the traffic situation in town. We have little country roads that cannot handle the kind of traffic that they're handling right now. No sidewalks on some of them. Most of them not even have the potential for sidewalks. Sidewalks cost a lot of money. It's a huge safety risk out there right now with the speed that's on the road and the sheer volumes of the roads. So I think that the Board of Selectmen needs to be proactive on this issue. I love the idea that we have a Starbucks coming to town. I love Starbucks. And I love the idea of a nice village-style development in North Wilmington, because I live there. I love those ideas. I welcome it with open arms. I hope that it happens. But on the same turn, we still have to make sure that when we promote these kind of developments, dense, mixed-use developments, that we have a plan in place to protect our neighborhoods, our adjacent neighborhoods. When we increase traffic, traffic spills over to the residential roads, and we need to take care of that. And I don't see a proactive Board of Selectmen right now. And if I'm elected to the board, I will make sure that that happens, that we look at the traffic situation in town. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As far as from the business standpoint, Steve, as you well know, I own a business in town and have owned a business since 1994. Also been a member of the Chamber of Commerce since 1994. When I was on the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, what the Chamber of Commerce would do is that they would send out notices when businesses opened for grand opening celebrations or if there were important anniversaries that business wanted the Board of Selectmen to go to. And I attended, I believe, every one. And many times, I was the only representative of the Board of Selectmen. One of the things that I also instituted with the Board of Selectmen, which some people may think is trivial, but I think is very important, is that we give a certificate on behalf of the town to that business owner and say, hey, welcome. On behalf of the town of Wilmington, welcome, and thank you very much for choosing Wilmington as a place to open your business. One of the things that we can do as a board to attract businesses is our tax rate. We have to be mindful of both the residential tax rate as well as the commercial tax rate. So that's one thing that we need to be very careful of, because if we have a tax rate that a business cannot afford, you know, they'll go elsewhere. One of the things also, when we look at the residence standpoint, we need to look at the Open Space Survey that was done this past year. And one of the things, question six, of which 532 people responded, do you think the pace of Wilmington is too rapid? 68% of the town said yes. And also, if you look at on the, do you favor mixed use of housing and retail? 56% of 400 people said no growth, and 25% or 178 people said to decrease that type of business in town. I think that the North Wilmington development, you need to be very, very careful of, because as it adds tax revenue, it's going to add a tremendous amount of traffic and burden to roads. As Suzanne said, that can barely handle it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smaglia.
Thank you. I think, yeah, creative planning would be a key catchphrase for that question. Obviously, the 10,000 jobs all sounds great. The nice little strip mall that looks like a little colonial market all sounds great. But the impact is going to be tremendous, and we're not going to put a big, huge mall in North Wilmington. So I think the creative planning would be a big part of that. Because as a town, the cost of business is constantly going up. It may go up 5%, and we only have the 2.5% tax base mandated by the state. So you have to, obviously, you have to work with developers. We have to listen to the residents of the town. We're not going to put a superhighway going right down Main Street with stores every five feet. That's obvious.
What's that?
Well, I mean, every, anymore. But you have to be creative. You have to tell the developers and the people that want to come into this town, these businesses, yeah, we do want to welcome them, but we also have to understand that we have to shift more of the tax rate onto the commercial than we do. Everybody's talking about taxes for the residents. Well, that's what we're going to have to do. And the cost of doing business just went up in Wilmington, that would be fine. But, yeah, I think creative planning would be the key. Obviously, going in front of town meeting and listening to the residents on any planning would be key. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the first portion of our Candidates Night, the panel questions. The second portion are questions from the audience, and I have four of those. And each candidate has one minute to respond to these questions. And we will start with Ms. Sullivan responding first. What has motivated you to be a candidate for the Wilmington Board of Selectmen?
Well, what's motivated me is sometimes I don't think there's enough of an independent voice on the Board of Selectmen. I think that the Board of Selectmen should be accessible to the people of the community. I think that's probably the biggest thing that motivates me. I think people need to have a voice in what's going on. And I think they should feel comfortable coming to their Board of Selectmen, asking for information or asking for help. That's why I do it, is because I want to help people. I want to help my community steer through some of the obstacles that we face. And I think that I can do a good job doing that. I think I have done a good job doing it. And so that's what motivates me to be there.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, my motivation is that, from what I see, is I see the board being stagnant. When I was, back before I was on the board in 2003, I saw them being stagnant, and I'm seeing them being stagnant again. I see a board that seems to me, in my eyes, seems pretty disjointed. I see a board that spends hours talking about town council and 15-minute phone calls, quote, "off the record" that town council says that selectmen are calling, but none of the five selectmen will admit to calling town council. I see a board that is not out and in tune with the public. What I would like to do when I get back on the board is be the motivating force, be an independent candidate. I have a proven track record. As an example, Ms. Sullivan talked to a neighbor about installing a light pole over in North Wilmington. Maybe what the Board of Selectmen should do is have a neighborhood meeting together as a board and as a group and talk to that neighbor, talk to the neighborhood about that. And there's ways to outreach that way. I did it before. I can do it again. My number's in the phone book. I'm very easy to accessible. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smaglia.
Thank you. I think my motivation for running for the board is there's a couple of different reasons. Number one, I've been asked by many friends of mine and family members over the past few years. I've done a lot of volunteerism in the town, as everybody knows, if you read the papers. And it's just a natural progression. I think I can help a lot of people in my position as the Veterans Agent. I also know I can help a lot of people if I was elected to the Board of Selectmen. I think being accessible is an easy thing. If you get your phone number out there and you work in an office out there, right here in the town hall. But not so much that, I don't see the board stagnant. I think everybody's on the board and that has volunteered for any board or any organization has to be commended for that. I am going to be able to listen to the town, to our residents of our community, work with them, and also be able to work with any members of the board, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected. Any members that are currently sitting on the board or the newly-elected members, I will be able to work with them. Thank you.
Mr. Newhouse.
There are three basic reasons that I'm running for the Board of Selectmen that motivate me. Number one, I enjoy it. And, you know, I'm not the kind of guy that presses the applause meter a lot of times at meetings or cracks a lot of good jokes. But I enjoy being part of the process. The other thing is I think I'm pretty good at it. I've been at it quite a while. I think that I have the background, you know, the education and the legal experience that I think is a plus. And I think I do a pretty good job. Probably most importantly, though, Wilmington is a town that is comprised of volunteers. And Lou talks about volunteerism, and I think he's right. There are people who coach and are part of service organizations and religious organizations and youth athletic groups. And they all find a way to participate and to give back to the town and to make it a better place. And for me, I think the best way for And for me, I think the best way for me at this point in time to make a difference and to give back to the town is to continue to serve on the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Our second question, Mr. West will respond first. "I am one of the elderly in Wilmington and am finding it hard to live day-to-day with all the tax increases. My question, is there a law that stipulates that before we can get a break on our real estate taxes, we cannot have an income of over $13,000? And if so, would you support lobbying the legislature to change that law?" The law that they are referring to is a tax, real estate tax reduction for individuals over 70 that have an income of less than $13,000, get a real estate exclusion of $500.
I think that's...
Thank you, Mrs. Hooper, for doing the research on that. Thank you.
As I said before, I think the taxes to the elderly, the taxes to the non-elderly, the taxes to businesses, you know, we need to control our taxes overall. I think one of the things that we need to do is that we need to, is to work with our seniors especially. They are very hard-hit. One of the things that I would like to do is that is bring our state legislative delegation in and tell them, look, this is something that we would like to do, is we'd like to make sure that there's tax relief for our seniors. I know right now the exemption is $500 off your taxes. What we need to do is work with our state legislature because they're the governing body, and see if we can move that exemption up to $1,000. I think that's something that the state should do, and I think it's what's right. We also do have the circuit breaker law, which will help some of our seniors. I'm in touch with the seniors. I was actually at the senior center this morning, and I think that there are ways that we can help Town, that we can help our seniors. When I was on the Board, I asked, every year I ask that the senior coordinator come in to discuss various programs, just to get the word out. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Absolutely. Excuse me, I agree with Frank. I deal a lot with seniors in my position, and being on a fixed income nowadays is very hard. Just look at the fuel prices alone, taxes. So any kind of tax break for the seniors would be huge. I mean, it would make, it's life-changing for them. It really is. Their quality of life is changed with a $500 tax break. As far as getting legislation in there, absolutely, again, any break that you can give to the seniors would help them immensely. It is life-changing. $500 a year may not sound like a lot to a lot of people, but when you're on a fixed income and you have the fuel costs going up, taxes going up, house repairs going up, the houses are getting older, I think any tax break, any tax abatement of any sort for the seniors is obviously a very important thing to them.
Mr. Newhouse.
I think that what we're hearing is that, and at least my position is, that I would support a change to the general laws that would enable our seniors who enjoy a tax break now to get a better abatement. But to be candid, you know, the best thing that we can do in that regard is just to be an advocate for you. That's something that does fall outside the scope of our jurisdiction and our abilities to do unilaterally at the Board of Selectmen. I think that what is more within our reach, though, is to continue to encourage diversified housing in Wilmington so that there are more affordable homes for some of our seniors to go to, and I mean truly affordable, not just affordable units that meet the state criteria, and to continue with home improvement loans that we've had great success with in the last five years and more. We need to continue to be able to offer those, especially to our seniors. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. Yes, I would support if from $500 to $1,000. I'm not sure what the numbers would actually be, but I definitely support looking into it and most likely would support a legislation if that would mean, you know, letters from the Board of Selectmen to the state delegation, if that's what it would take. I think that affordable housing for seniors is a huge issue. It's another issue that we haven't really tackled. I think the Woodfield School, I know Mr. West was very active on this, would be a great location for affordable senior housing, something very similar to Deming Way. There's ways that we can get that done, and I think, once again, we need to get that done. It's very difficult for seniors on fixed incomes. I know how hard it is when the tax bills go out. I struggle myself with my tax bill, and so I think to offer seniors some help, they've been there, they've been, you know, paying tax bills for, you know, 30, 40 years in the town of Wilmington, they deserve our help with the way that the market is with the housing and the way the housing costs have just skyrocketed up. So, yes, I would support something like that, yes.
Thank you. Our next question, Mr. Semaglia will respond first. The question is, "If elected, what specific action or actions do you plan to take to keep Wilmington a community we can continue to be proud of?"
I think working hard for the community would be number one. As I've stated before, I am very proud of this community. I do a lot of volunteerism in this town, working with the youth for over a decade in a couple of different sports. I think that that is our future. Our kids, obviously, are our future, and you have to make it their education. The school system has to continue the way that it is going to attract new families, to the families that we have in town, to make sure they keep going and staying in our public school systems. I would work very hard with the residents of the town being accessible, and I think Wilmington is just that kind of town. We work so hard for our youth and our children and our school systems and our sports, and we work so hard for our elders, and it's a very unique town, and a lot of towns out there that are having some, whether financial problems or whatever, I mean, I'm sure they all love their kids, but Wilmington is a unique town, and I would work very hard to keep it like that.
Mr. Newhouse.
Specifically, I would continue to do business in a way that I hope people think I've done the last three years, and that's in a professional manner, to, you know, to promote professional government at all levels, and I think that's an overriding theme that's very important in a town to continue to improve municipal services and to keep the cost of those services manageable. As far as specific projects, one of the things that the Board of Selectmen has done in past years that I want to continue to do, and that is to fund education for our kids in excess of state mandates, and to continue to be supportive of that and to work well with the school committee and school department. I also am quite focused on trying to raise private funds and look at all of the alternatives available to make sure that our kids have enough space to play sports in the town of Wilmington. There are 3,000 to 4,000 kids that play sports every day of the week in this town, and we need to make sure we continue to offer that service. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, and I have three of those children. And I also serve on the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee as liaison for the Board of Selectmen, and I agree. I mean, there are a lot of things that we need to do to make sure that we maintain our community, and I say maintain. There may be, you know, Sharapis Farm may be on the horizon, and the town may have an opportunity to buy that piece of property. That's a good way to increase field space. We may have to look at innovative ways to do that. We may have to maybe purchase the property, carve, you know, a parcel or two out, resell it, development, work out some kind of deal with the property owners. I'd like to see the town acquire that property and have it cost as little as possible for the taxpayers. I think that we need to continue to take pride in the community, to keep it clean, take pride in our environment, and obviously, our schools are, first and foremost, in my mind, I have three children in the school system. Those are some of the things I think that we need to do. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, you know, when I was on the Board, I felt that I was an independent candidate. I was out there and accessible to the public. When it came time for any Chamber of Commerce events or public gatherings that the Board of Selectmen was invited to, I think I've got, if not a perfect record, a near-perfect record. So basically, what I would do is just continue to be accessible to the public and show the public that the Board of Selectmen does care about whatever the event that you're sponsoring. Real quick on field space is that one of the things that I would support on field space is the Wildwood Street property. Six acres of land, five acres, I think, could be developed into probably two, maybe three fields for emerging sports such as lacrosse. The other thing, back in the late '70s, there was a proposal that we could put fields over on the Salem Street property. This proposal, which the town paid $10,000 to develop, has three ballfields, a track, and another field, and a lot of open space. Maybe this is something that the town could relook at if this area's not being used for a high school development. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, Mr. Newhouse will respond first. "Do you support a substation in North Wilmington and/or an increase in fire and police personnel? And if so, what areas will you cut to pay for this, or will you support a proposition two-and-a-half override?"
I think that we did comment on this earlier, and maybe we can just reiterate some of the points that were made and expound on a little bit. I believe that we do have the need for a fire substation. I believe that the experts are nearly unanimous in identifying the North Wilmington area as the appropriate place for that. Will I support it? It's a question of timing. I believe that we need it, and I am personally willing to, you know, to vote for a prop two-and-a-half override that will increase my own taxes. But I think that before we take that vote to a Town Meeting or to a ballot box, we need to generate the kind of support to be successful, and we have to make sure that the town is comfortable with the timing. And again, that plays into, you know, issues of financing and other projects around the table. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
I would support a fire substation in North Wilmington, but once again, I don't know what the numbers are. I don't know what the long-term staffing would be, how that would impact the budget. I want to see a fire substation in North Wilmington. I think it's imperative. Do I want to cut other departments to fund it? No, I don't. I don't think it's ever a good idea to pit one department against another department. You know, police against fire or DPW against fire, police, the school against, you know, fire and police. I just don't think that's, it's a good idea to do that. I think that if we're going to bring a proposal forward, we have to get support of the people, the community, and we have to present those numbers. But no, I would not be in favor of cutting other departments to do that. I think we need to take a hard look at it, but, and I would support a fire substation in North Wilmington, but I don't have the figures in front of me, so I don't know what the numbers would be, and it would be a long-range commitment because we would have to staff that facility.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As far as the direct staffing of the fire department or any of the departments in town, I think the expert, for example, with the fire department would be the fire chief and deputy fire chief. You know, they're the ones that are responsible for knowing what it takes to make Wilmington safe in that regards. What I'd like to see as far as the substation in North Wilmington, I fully support it, but I'd like also to see the results of the survey that we've put out, to see exactly where the location should be, how much it costs, and what the scope of that cost is. And I'd like to see if maybe one of the people that could pay for it is through that Andover Route 93 development, you know, maybe, you know, because what we'd be doing is that we would be helping that development out as far as, you know, all the increase in businesses down there from the various towns. Maybe some of those towns, for example, one of them, the Mills in Tuxbury, was supposed to give the town of Tuxbury a fire, an ambulance. Maybe we can get some sort of a bang for our buck as far as, you know, the, maybe a new fire truck or something down there. Thank you.
Mr. Semaglia.
Yeah, I agree with what the other candidates here have said. I think timing would be key. Do we, as far as a prop two-and-a-half, again, that would all be the timing, what the cost would be and the time of doing it. Would I put another department against another? No. I think what's, what would be the advantage of having a brand-new school, if the kids aren't safe walking to it or being in it? You know, we always have to look at the bottom line, and I think having a substation would be a great idea in Wilmington, but maybe it's all about the timing and the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final question comes from Jordan's Furniture. "Would you support the town buying an insurance policy that if the Red Sox win the World Series, no one in town pays real estate taxes this year?" I like that idea. It's now time for our closing statements from the candidates, and Ms. Sullivan will start first, and each candidate has two minutes to give their closing statements. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and I want to thank the Lowell Sun and the Advocate and the Town Crier and you, Mr. Moderator, for hosting us tonight, WCTV, and my work that I've done on the environmental issues. And some people may think that that's just who I am. It's not just who I am, a multi-minded person, and I see that some of the environmental issues that we have in town feed over to the bigger issue, which is the quality of life issue. I think traffic is a big concern in Wilmington, and I want to do something about it. I want to help out the neighborhoods and help the people that have called me on the phone and asked for some help with the traffic on their streets. I've been there for the people the last four years. I think I've done a good job, and I ask you for your vote on April 28th, and please, come out and vote on April 28th. Don't let apathy set in. We can make a difference in this community. We have made a difference in this community, and for me to continue making a difference on your behalf, I need your vote on April 28th, so please, come out and help me. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For those of you who don't know, I'm a lifelong resident here in Wilmington. I've lived here for 44 years. I'm raising a family. I've got a wonderful wife, Karen, who's been very supportive of me, and I've got a daughter who's 11, her name's Colleen, and my son Frank Jr. will be nine in May. Why am I running for the Board of Selectmen? I'm running because, again, like I said, I feel that the Board, since I've been off the Board, I feel that the Board has been very stagnant. I've been out there, out talking to the people, I've been doing everything what I normally do as far as, you know, just dealing with, you know, dealing with the issues and learning about the issues. I think what I bring to the Board is I think I bring experience. I think I also bring independence, and I think I bring commitment. I've been committed to the residents here in Wilmington for many years. I volunteer in several organizations. My family's also volunteers in organizations, so I think that a vote for me is a vote for commitment, integrity, and experience. With that, I'd like to thank the Lowell Sun, the Town Crier, the Advocate, certainly you, Mr. Moderator, the League of Women Voters, WCTV, and more importantly, I'd say the candidates. It's nice to know that there's enough people here in Wilmington that care to run for an office, that, you know, they have a desire and a love for their community and a love for the experiences that this type of job does. In closing, I'd like to wish everybody well in the election, both in our race and the other contested and non-contested races, and I agree with Suzanne. I'd say, you know, whatever it is, go out and vote. You know, unfortunately, we have people in foreign countries right now that are, our young men and women that are bravely fighting for freedom in another country so that they can have the right to vote, and I think if we can get as many people in Wilmington here to vote, irregardless of your candidate, please, get out there. The polls are open. Get an absentee ballot. Do whatever you can, but please, exercise your American right and vote. Thank you very much.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you. I also, too, would like to thank the League of Women Voters, WCTV, the newspapers, and Jim Stewart, moderator. I'd also like to mention my wife, Marion, my son Louis, my son Nick, and my daughter Brittany. They've been so supportive of me throughout every endeavor we've done. We've done everything as a family, and we've had a lot of fun doing it in this town. I'd also like to thank my committee, the committee that, to elect Lou Semaglia for Selectmen. A lot of them weren't into politics. This is my first run of politics, and I think that we have run a very clean, honest, and positive campaign. We have not had to say anything degrading publicly, publicly or privately, or in print or whatever it was, about any other candidate. I'm a pretty honest guy. I want to be here for the town because I love the town. I want to be here for all the residents of the town, the youth, the old, everybody, and I just want to say that publicly, that it's been a lot of fun, and politics is an interesting game, and I'd like to thank the committee for doing all the work. I'm pretty proud of the campaign that we've run. As far as voting, yes, we have to support our form of town government. So, yeah, get out there and vote. I think I'd like to see a good turnout. All of us would like to see a good turnout, and I'm just asking you, please, if you could just throw one of your votes my way, I would really appreciate it, and I'd be there for you. Thank you.
Mr. Newhouse.
First of all, as the other candidates have done, thank you all very much, members of the press and Mr. Moderator, to the folks who have produced it here at WCTV, to the League of Women Voters, thank you all for having this forum and giving us the opportunity to reach some of the folks there at home. I just want to take this opportunity to, first of all, thank the residents of having given me the privilege of serving the last three years and asking you to cast one of your two votes for me and to give me the opportunity to continue the work that we've done. I think that one of the things that I bring to the table that's really important is not only, you know, an education and a background that really helps out in some of the more serious situations in town, but I bring a practical side, a business side, to the table, and, you know, I'm a big proponent of finding practical solutions and, you know, business solutions to problems before running to the courthouse, and that probably seems strange coming from a lawyer, but... And that probably seems strange coming from a lawyer, but that's how I run my business, that's how I help to run the town and to participate with the Board of Selectmen. And I think that this town needs to have, needs to continue to have a consistent, thoughtful, analytical and practical person who's willing to be level-headed, treat other people with the courtesy and the respect that they deserve. I think that I've done that, I certainly have tried to do that and I, I thank you very much for, for hearing us tonight and thank you very much in advance for getting out and voting next week and I ask you, again, please consider voting for me with one of your two votes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank WCTV and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring the Candidates Night for 2007 once again. And also to Adet Kenty, our timekeeper, thank you for your, your assistance and to Ms. Mayor Hoddle, Mr. Buick and Mr. Tucker, thank you for your questions and your time this evening. There are five races on the ballot this year, for redevelopment authority, regional school committee, housing authority, school committee, and as you know, four candidates seek two seats for the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. Election day is April 28th, the polls open at 10 o'clock and I would be remiss if I didn't tell you the town meeting is the following Saturday, May 5th, starting at 10:30. 28 articles of fun, friendly and exciting democracy in action. So good luck to our candidates and thank you, most importantly, to our audience and to those of you at home for joining us this evening. Thank you.